Now six o'clock and I call the order this Borough Council meeting, June twelfth, two thousand twenty-five. And begin with a moment of silence, a pledge of allegiance to the flag led by Councilor Russo.
Hello, um. I uh just wanted to mention that today, July or July, June twelfth, is the fifty-eighth anniversary of the Supreme Court decision Loving versus Virginia. Um, which ended uh the anti-misconception laws. Sorry, I'm not very well, I I Google pronounced it like four times, but still. Um, anyway, which uh outlawed uh mixed-race marriages in the United States. Um, I'm a product of a mixed-race marriage. Um, my father is white and my mom is Japanese. And I remember growing up that I was always like super scared about like this being overturned, but it has also been the basis for um some of the more recent Supreme Court rulings deciding in favor of um marital equality. And I just wanted to make a note of this decision because um in a Pew Research study, they found that in twenty nineteen that one in five newly married couples were of mixed race. I'm also in a mixed-race uh relationship with my husband. And I just wanted to say that this diversity is our strength. Um, and I wanted to take the time to reflect on the love and commitment of these two individuals that have allowed for the freedoms that we have in marrying those who we love and um their resilience in um uh their deep love for one another. So, thanks. And now we can stand for the pledge.
Before before I call the roll, I have to note too that um we're we're fortunate to be uh uh home to Dickinson College where the president of the college was uh was the first federal judge to um find that Pennsylvania's ban on same-sex marriage was was unconstitutional. So um now lawyers like me that did a lot of family law early on, we didn't call it marriage equality, we called it divorce equality. Madam Secretary of the Roll, please.
Here.
Ms. Mellon.
Here.
Ms. Perry.
Here.
Ms. Ruth.
Here.
Ms. Chow.
Here.
Mr. Stewie.
Here.
Mayor Shulz.
Here. Thank you. I'm gonna be begin with a presentation down at at the podium. There's a there's a birthday coming up on on Saturday that uh the country's going to be celebrating. So now we have we have uh representatives from the US Army um Heritage and Education Center. So I'm sorry, we haven't met in person before. Jul- Julie, is that you? Okay, if you want to call it, come on up. Yeah, um so full disclosure, I um am am the brother of a naval officer. Uh, the son, son of uh, my my father served in Vietnam, the Air Force. Um, my my paternal grandfather served in the Navy. Um, but I'm saved by my maternal grandfather who who's served in the Army in 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 World War Two. Um, so the big birthday I'm talking about is the two-hundred-fiftieth birthday of the US Army. Um, the Army has uh served our country uh as the Continental Army uh before we were a nation. Uh, we were, we were in rebellion. Uh, this Army has uh ensured our our rights under our Constitution, um key to which is our First Amendment right, which allows us all to be here and speak our minds. Um, and our residents to speak our minds at this at this podium. Um, and it's been an army made of members, uh soldiers who have sacrificed their lives to ensure those those freedoms. Um, so uh a quarter of a millennia, put it that way, is a is a long time in this in this country. Um, this still relatively young, young country that we live in. Um, and those securities are still insured by by the US Army to this to this very day. Um, and I I know Julie, I want to give you an opportunity afterwards to talk about um what what AHAQ has has coming up. Uh, because I know I'll I'll get to partake a little bit tomorrow tomorrow night and then there we have a very busy Saturday in the borough and and the uh US Army Heritage Education Center also has has a lot, a lot going on. Um, but this is uh proclamation, Carlisle Borough celebrates the two-hundred-fiftieth birthday of the United States Army. Whereas on June fourteenth, seventeen seventy-five, the Second Continental Congress established the United States Army, marking the birth of America's military and the beginning of its fight for freedom and independence. And whereas for nearly two-hundred-and-fifty years, the Army has stood as a guardian of liberty, providing security to our nation and maintaining and promoting peace worldwide through strength, readiness, and deterrence. And whereas the courage, dedication, and sacrifice of Army soldiers, veterans, and their families have ensured the safety and prosperity of our nation and the freedoms we cherish. And whereas the United States Army remains steadfast in its mission to serve and defend, building strong ties with local communities and fostering partnerships that strengthen the fabric of our great nation. And whereas the Borough of Carlisle recognizes the Army's pivotal role in shaping our nation's history, security, and freedom, now therefore I Sean Schultz, Mayor of Carlisle Borough, do hereby proclaim June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five as United States Army Day in Carlisle Borough, and encourage all residents to join in honoring the men and women who have served and continue to serve in the United States Army. And we have been fortunate to continue to have um credible relationship both with the Barracks, the War College, and of course, the the US Army Heritage and Education Center. Um, Julie, please, please go on about all the things that you do there. Uh Julie's the president of of AHAQ.
Thank you, thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate it. As an Army brat myself, I have to say I will um totally allow the Naval Academy to take precedence when it comes to football wins, which I think is an accurate reflection of the football situation, but um I, whether I liked it or not, I moved to Carlisle in nineteen ninety-seven because my father, a Colonel in the Army, was stationed at the War College. Little did I know I would come to fall in love with this incredibly historic place and the military presence in this city. Carlisle is one of the few cities in this country that gave birth to the Army and the nation and where you can still see the Army's roots. Right here in downtown Carlisle, at the old cemetery, at the Army War College, and of course, at the Army Heritage and Education Center, which my foundation, the Army Heritage uh Center Foundation represents and helps promote. So on behalf of all of our members, retired members of the military community, the Army, um, thank you so much. This means so much to so many people.
Schultz, happy birthday too. Thank you again. Um, next is an opportunity for citizens to be heard. So if there's anybody who wants to be heard on any topic of Borough Government, come on up to the podium. Doreen, we we know who you are, but give us your name and address.
Hello. Uh, I am Doreen Wilbur. I reside at two thirty-one West Willow Street. Um, first, I want to say thank you for what you do at the Heritage and Educational Center. Uh, my dad, who is now eighty-eight, um, he visited last year and so we took him in his wheelchair over there and he actually broke down in tears um because he felt, he was in the Korean War. He felt seen, um, and he served in the Army in the Korean War. So I just wanted to share that and say thank you for all you do. So, thank you. Um, the second comment I want to make is has nothing to do with much except for yes, I'm wearing the Steelers T-shirt, but no, I do not agree with you-know-who coming to the Steelers. So I just want to put that on record. All right, um, so as I stated, this thing is loud, um, I live on two thirty-one West Willow. I've lived there for quite a while. And one of the things that uh my neighbors and I talk about is the fact that when people come down West Street and they turn, that they start just automatically, honestly, without even thinking, speeding down West Willow Street. Uh, um, there have been many times in which my son or I have gotten out of the car um and a speeding vehicle is just, you know, seemingly coming out of nowhere. Um, I know that part of the road, I believe, is Cumberland County, but also part of the road is Carlisle. Um, and it's it's really becoming a safety issue. I had meant to talk to my neighbors um earlier, but this has just been a crazy, busy week. Um, but we've all noticed it and we do have children and teen drivers and young drivers on the road. So I'm just honestly here to ask um if there's any way we can get a speed bump or just even if you monitor it to see what I see literally on a daily basis. And it is rarely the uh car show folks. It's people who reside, you know, in Carlisle and know the back streets and know how to get from one side to the other without going down the main road. So it is a concern and just wanted to bring that to your attention. So, thank you. Go Steelers, not Aaron Rodgers.
Thank you, Doreen. I didn't know we weren't allowed to say his name, though. Um, but I'm sure the Borough Manager, you know, is is aware of that now. We'll 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 take a look at it. And we are making an effort because there are these issues, of course, across the borough. I live up uh on nor- near North Pitt Street and there's a lot of racing up and down North North Pitt Street um and and throughout the borough. So we're we're making an effort to do sort of a sort of a global look at at these these issues and have a a more refined way of of dealing with them. Um, so we're not dealing with them as they crop up and we can identify them better. But thank you for bringing that forward. Anyone else? Tina, Tina, we know you too, but name, name, you know the, you know the draw.
Come back to that, actually. So Tina, one, or Tina Ziegler, one-twenty East Louder Street. Actually, first want to echo what Doreen just said because I used to live at two thirty West Willow Street and it was always a nightmare. Um, several times, uh, I felt like at least once a month, we would hear crashes on that street. Um, I was present several times at that intersection of West Willow and College where people don't realize there's a stop sign and they just blow through. And I've seen some really gnarly accidents there. So just wanted to add that West Willow is like one of the most dangerous streets in the in the borough, in my opinion. But um I just kind of wanted to ask, um, I noticed that once again, the welcoming ordinance wasn't on the agenda. And so I was just hoping, you know, to get a status update on that and also um if we're not able to be moving forward with that in that way, if we could discuss like maybe how we are planning to take steps to keep folks safe in the borough.
Um, well, we're we're always taking steps to keep people safe in the in the borough. Um, that that's a workshop, that'll be a workshop item because we workshop those ordinances before um before it gets on the regular council agenda. Um, so and I imagine council is probably going to be ready to take a good look at it at the next workshop. I'm not going to pin everybody down right now just because I don't I don't know where everybody is on it because we just got, we got the uh um the recommended revisions to sort of um dovetail with our with our requirements um from from our attorney not too long ago. I forget, it's been within a week or so, maybe two weeks. Yeah, about two weeks. Um, so we're gonna, it's it's still on the agenda, it's still, um, we'll 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 get it there and we'll we'll have some some discussion on it.
Okay, cool. Will will that be available before the next workshop meeting to look at, the revisions?
One- once we have a, once we have a a an ordinance that would be considered by council, it'd be, yeah, we'll we'll make it available and we'll make sure you you have a copy too in advance.
Um, my last statement, it actually has to do with announcing who you are and where you live. Um, I'd also like to just state for whoever has to approve the minutes that last week, the only person to speak in opposition of the resolution that was passed opposing um action in the Gaza Strip, the only person to speak in opposition to that, aside from yourself and Councilor Mellon, um, was a Harrisburg resident. His name is Jordan Allen Clonan and he lives at twenty-three oh-six Forest Lane in Harrisburg. It's a seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar house. He's a physician. He does not work in Carlisle, he works in Harrisburg. And so I just wanted the record to reflect that the only two people in Carlisle to come forward in the public debate about this um in opposition, like I said, were you and Councilor Mellon.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Hey there, Eric Smith, uh, one-twenty-one Southeast Street. Almost gave my old address at Arch Street, which was near Willow, and I agree as always that more traffic calming is essential and um I guess, I suppose that's where I'll start, but also I just want to thank and congratulate the borough since I couldn't make it last Wednesday on uh passing the ordinance that Tina just discussed. I was running down after I got out of work at seven o'clock to catch it and was glad to hear good things when I got here out of breath and everyone is coming out of the meeting, so um missed the meeting, but really glad to have seen the recording and um the positive result. So, yes, uh, traffic calming, I also echo that. We have, as you said, Mayor Schultz, we have um traffic issues all over the borough and I'm really excited to see, continue following along and supporting the efforts to make it uh safer for everyone in line with our Vision Zero Resolution that was passed last year. Um, and also I believe it's next month's workshop meeting, but as usual, I probably won't make it in time. Um, a traffic calming project that I went to a meeting for last ye- year uh regarding Bedford and East Street, uh reducing them to one lane instead of two and adding a uh a party-protected bike lane. I believe that's next month's Borough Workshop or sometime this summer. Um, I just want to wholeheartedly support that as someone who rides my bike a lot and since first going to a meeting about it, has moved to Southeast Street and would really love to see it be safer for me to um get around around my own house. Um, in addition to the general safety for pedestrians and bikers all over town. Um, on that note, I also noticed in the agenda, item C four of the, is it just regular agenda, the non-consensus part? Um, rejecting bids received for the downtown traffic signals equipment upgrade project. Um, I am curious to hear more about that than I'm sure we'll get to later in the meeting, but also just want to emphasize that while they're not, certainly not as defective as uh speed bumps or enforcement, um, signals can be really powerful and I'm glad that we are talking about those upgrades. Um, I make a point of going out of my way to cross High Street when I can uh in front of Dickinson College because the big blinking signal they have there uh is the most effective pedestrian safety measure I've seen around town. Um, and more things like that. I think Mitch, Councilor Mitch Shals probably knows the official name of that sort of signal um would be really welcome to see to make it safer around town for um folks that walk a lot like myself. Um, my last quick thing is item D one. I just want to also thank and support everyone proactively. I suppose it hasn't been voted on, but I'm really glad the borough is supporting transit funding and taking action on this and also doing it so quickly. I saw in the recording that this was brought up at the end of last week's workshop meeting, so I'm glad to see it on the agenda already and um proud of us for taking quick action on that because that makes life better for everyone by making our region more connected. Um, so my final thing was is pulling back to item C three on the agenda. Um, the price contract for uh Malco Landscaping, doing a forested riparian buffer in Biddle Mission Park. Forested riparian buffers are wonderful and I'm really glad to see that there is funding and interest in a project for this. Um, I did some research when I saw this on the agenda and was also really happy to read um the riparian buffers section of our Borough Code. Uh, and just, I am, knowing the great folks on our Parks and Recreation Board, I'm probably being redundant, but just to be safe and show that citizens support this. Um, I just want to make sure and emphasize that in addition to being the lowest responsive bidder, that I hope this is an eligible and well-fitting proposal that fits our requirements in that code, um, that existing native vegetation shall be protected and maintained. Um, and whatever practicable invasive vegetation shall be removed and it should be planted with native trees, shrubs, and other vegetation to create a diverse native plant community. Um, I looked up the contractor, Malco Landscaping, and couldn't find any particular uh mention of them prioritizing or being interested in native plants, uh but native vegetation, as our Borough Code reflects, is essential to ecological sustainability, which is not just a buzzword, ecology is what makes life possible here and everywhere. Um, and also for biodiversity and as always, and like everyone else in this room, I believe, uh, what makes me proud to be a citizen of Carlisle is our diversity, human and otherwise, and I want us to uh protect and treasure that moving forward. So I have not followed this particular contract closely enough to comment yes or no on it. Um, generally, I trust our Parks and Recreation Board with that, but just in case it hadn't come up yet, I wanted to draw attention to that topic and hope that we follow our code and priorities there. Um, and if we are doing so, I want to thank you for prioritizing forested riparian buffers because those are also really great and again, wonderful for ecology, sustainability on our whole regional level as well as human health since that's water that humans rely on. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you for doing your homework on that. That was very impressive. I I'm now looking at the code as well.
Any anyone else? Stephanie, anybody via Zoom? Yep, okay. Uh, we'll move on to the consent agenda. It's a list of routine items, do not appear to be controversial in nature and which probably do not require additional discussion. They can be acted on by one motion in their current form. If discussion is desired on any particular item, any member of council or the public may request the item be removed from the consent agenda and that item will be considered separately. Is there any member of council requesting an item be considered separately? Any member of the public? Hearing none, I'll um uh look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Subtle.
Motion by the Deputy Mayor, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Mellon, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion carries. There are no, so that that approves everything under the consent agenda through page three. Um, on the page four of the agenda, there are no table continuing recurring items, uh nothing under the mayor's report. We'll move on to budget and finance.
Thank you, Mayor Schultz. Uh, I have three items this evening. Um, I make the motion that Borough Council approve a quote of ninety-two thousand six hundred and seventy dollars from Hinton and Associates Incorporated for the purchase and installation of replacement computers as part of the Borough's Information Technology Movement's program.
Deputy Mayor makes a motion to approve a quote of ninety-two thousand six hundred and seventy dollars from Hinton and Associates for purchasing and installation of replacement computers. I'll second that motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion carries.
And I make the motion that Borough Council reaffirm the execution of contracts with Diesel Direct to purchase the following forty thousand gallons of gasoline at a fixed contract price of two point four four eight six per gallon and thirty-three thousand gallons of diesel at a fixed contract price of two point six nine five three point per gallon.
Deputy Mayor makes a motion to reaffirm the execution of contracts with Diesel Direct for the purchase of gasoline and diesel fuel. I'll second that motion. Any discussion?
Discussion. Um, I just wanted to sort of note a few things on this uh sort of wrote my thoughts down on it. Uh, regarding uh the vote on this purchase, I know that this fuel is needed for the day-to-day operations of the borough and that there are many important things that come from it, daily functions that many of us do not question until they go wrong. Um, it will fuel our vehicles, uh maintenance, equipment, uh and backup generators. Uh, this fuel will keep our water running clean and our streets safer. Um, I really do appreciate the work that our staff conducts in our borough and I have no intention of bungling up these very necessary processes. I also don't expect perfection from anyone and I know that ironing these things out will take time. And that if we don't purchase this, we'll probably just end up filling up at a local fuel station. Um, but forty thousand gallons of gasoline and thirty-three thousand gallons of diesel when burned in the presence of oxygen will produce approximately three thousand one hundred and fifty-six metric tons of carbon dioxide. Uh, if that were dry ice, uh assuming that this room is twelve feet tall, uh it would uh fill it up twice um and uh probably have a little bit left over to spare. To sequester that CO2, assuming the generous maximum of one-point-five tons per acre that Penn State Forestry assumes, a minimum of two thousand one hundred and four acres of forest would be required to absorb that over a year. Um, there are also limits on how much a forest can absorb over time. This is a miniscule amount compared to uh what is being emitted on our streets on a weekly or even daily basis. Uh, and there are many people who could care less about these numbers uh and that I have my own emissions to account for and atone for. Um, but for a growing number of young people who are aware of the science, they see themselves as having no future to plan for. Uh, there's no way I can vote for this and look at my son in the eye in ten years from now and tell him that I at least tried. Uh, and while my lone vote will not change the outcome of this, I do think our votes are symbolic and point in the direction of change uh and that one day there will likely be a council that will take more decisive action on this. And that day may be sooner than we believe.
Any, any, any other discussion on that item? I just want to clarify with the Borough Manager, probably will know better than I. We've, we've, I know we've made efforts to electrify our our fleet. Um, can you, are you able to touch on that a little bit? Sorry to put you on the spot.
Oh, that's okay. Well, first of all, I'd like to clarify that the the uh fuel that's before uh Borough Council, it is for the Public Works Garage Operations, the water plant, the sewer plant, our volunteer fire firefighting apparatus and EMS. Uh, we do, uh anytime that we are looking to replace a piece of equipment within the Borough of Carlisle, we are committed to uh the research and bringing forward to council um the comparisons of if there is an electric vehicle model uh that is comparable to what we are trying to replace. Uh, the po- we've done a very good job as far as replacement of um the police department's fleet is all but entirely hybrid now. Is that correct to you? Yes, so to electric, uh we were fortunate to get a grant uh last year, I believe. I'm looking at our assistant manager who helped manage that grant uh to replace our code vehicle, construction inspector vehicles, uh all with electric uh as well. So we are making strides that way. There are times- So we are making strides that way. There are times that we have brought equipment forward to you that you know uh we've, we've done a cost comparison and it's just a very significant outlay of funds to go with an electric model of a heavy-duty piece of equipment. But you know, um your staff stands ready. We will continue to do the research and uh it's a council's discretion whether or not council so opts to go with uh, you know, the, the fuel uh equipment or electric or hybrid models going forward that we bring forward to you.
Uh, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to make clear for those, those who are here and, and those who may be listening that this council has made, I think, very decisive action on, on this. Um, not just our, our climate action plan, um but also long ago, I mean, I was an early adopter of the electrification of, of our, our, our fleet. And the reality is that, you know, there was not a good alternative to things like fire, um, you know, fire engines, fire, fire trucks and that kind of apparatus to electrify, electrify them, a lot of the larger equipment and an alter- alternative um fuel to, to provide um generator power for us is not, is not yet, yet feasible. That day may come and then we can take much more decisive action. Um, but obviously, I mean, I'll, I'll be voting for this because it's absolutely needed for the functions of, of the borough and I'm not going to, to make a symbolic vote because I, I do want this, I do want us to, to do better as far as the climate is concerned, much better and continue to push that forward. Um, but it, it, these are important needs this borough must meet. And, and the borough manager did say there was an economic aspect to it and the, the cost of it. I think we also need to be cognizant that is it fifteen, sixteen percent of this, this borough lives, lives in poverty, below the poverty level. Um, councillor Mellon could ha- help me again with the Alice numbers in the borough around fif- close to fifty percent. Sorry, fifty-seven percent. Um, so when we make these decisions, we're balancing a number, a number of things. Um, and climate action again is incredibly important to this council. Um, but so are, so are the lives that, that people in this borough need, need to live, to live every day. Um, is there any other comment on this item? Okay.
I do, I do just want to say I, it's um, I absolutely do appreciate, you know, everything that the borough and staff does for this. I, I don't mean to like um act as though we're not because, uh you know, I see those actions all the time and I, I really do appreciate them. Uh, and I do appreciate the, the um, you know, what, what is this fuel goes towards, so.
Thank, thank you. Thank you, councillor Shiles. Um, anything further?
I'll just say I appreciate, I, I do the same, the exact same thing of taking the opportunity to make additional comments, even if it doesn't change the outcome of the vote, but it brings us focus in a, in a different way. I mean, and so I appreciate these kinds of comments. I appreciate the research and I do think that it, it empowers us to do more continually. Um, not that we aren't doing, uh have been doing um a significant amount, especially in comparison to some other, you know, municipalities of our size. Um, so I, I appreciate how much every single person here and, and the community educates me and it makes me want to understand things even further. So ask, asking good questions is our job, I wish.
And all, all the con- context between the two of us is incredibly important. So, thank you. Um, thanks for, all right, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Nay.
And the motion carries. Um, next, next item, final item.
Um, I make the motion that Borough Council approve a quote for twenty-two thousand thirty-nine dollars and thirty-four cents from Tuckey Restoration to restore two offices, a hallway and a bathroom at Town Hall due to water damage that occurred on February seventeenth, twenty twenty-five with costs for services rendered reimbursed by the borough's insurance carrier.
Deputy Mayor makes a motion to approve a quote of twenty-two thousand thirty-nine dollars and thirty-four cents from Tuckey Restoration for all that water damage over in that direction. Um, is there, um, I'll, I'll second that motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The motion carries.
And that completes my report.
Thank you. And public safety, I move that council adopt a resolution approving the sale of the two thousand eight Sutton Fire Engine VIN number, this is ridiculous, one S nine A one B L E zero eight one zero zero three zero nine three uh to Silver Springs Community Fire Company for two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. Approval is subject to the borough solicitor's satisfactory review and approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Roos. Any discussion? I'll just mention that um this is a, you know, continuing effort of our fire companies to um to, to trim where they can, can trim and make sure um also that, that they have the apparatus that they, that they need to effectively protect this, this borough as they do every day. Chief, who's about, we have about, each company has around a thousand calls a year. Is that, you know, ballpark, right? Um, so they're, they're out there doing, doing that work um while, while many are um sitting at home or at work um and out there protecting the borough. Is there uh any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The motion carries. Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a number of items this evening. First, I move that Borough Council enter into an engineering services contract for not to exceed cost of eighty-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars with Gannett Fleming Incorporated to provide design services for the borough's two thousand twenty-five water distribution system rehabilitation program, subject to the borough solicitor's approval of the contract.
Councillor Stevie makes a motion to enter into an engineering services contract for an amount not to exceed eighty-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars with Gannett Fleming to provide design services for the borough's two thousand twenty-five water distribution system rehabilitation program. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Shiles. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. And the motion carries.
Next, I move the Borough Council approve the purchase of a rebuild of the existing washer compactor uh for the wastewater treatment plant from Cappy Associates of MS Pennsylvania for fifty-two thousand two hundred and nineteen dollars through the Commonwealth Pennsylvania's cooperative purchasing program, Co-Stars number zero one six dash E two three dash three one zero.
Councillor Stevie makes a motion to approve the purchase of a rebuild of the existing washer compactor for the wastewater treatment plant from Cappy, Cappy Associates of Imaeus, my, my brother used to live there, Pensil- Pennsylvania for fifty-two thousand two hundred and nineteen dollars. That was before he was in the Navy. Um, is there a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Shiles. Any discussion? And I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. And the motion carries.
Thanks. Before I make a motion for the next item, I did just want to, I'm sorry, highlight uh in relation to uh comments earlier. So with the contract with Ma- Malco Landscaping, it's my understanding that staff has reviewed the contractor and, and found them capable of accomplishing the work in, you know, meeting the borough's existing requirements. Um, and in terms of the lowest responsive bidder requirement, that's actually something that the boroughs required to satisfy, to follow based on state law. Um, the Commonwealth requires the municipalities, when bidding contracts, award them to the lowest responsive bidder. So that's kind of where that terminology comes from. Um, so just wanted to highlight that. But uh in terms of the motion itself, I move that Borough Council award the lump sum price contract for the Biddle Mission Park Forested Riparian Buffer Project to the lowest responsive bidder, Malco Landscaping Incorporated, in the amount of seventy-six thousand five hundred dollars, pending the receipt of the bonds and insurances required for the project. And that Borough Council also authorize any contract change order needed, needing prompt action in an amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars each to be approved at the discretion of the borough manager and brought before council for a track of approval.
Councillor Stevie makes a motion to award the lump sum price contract for Biddle Mission Park Forested Riparian Buffer Project to lowest responsive bidder, Malco Landscaping Incorporated, in the amount of seventy-six thousand five hundred dollars. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Shiles. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The motion carries.
Um, and before the next item, I just wanted to highlight, so uh recent rationale for rejecting all the bids for the signalization upgrade, um the borough received a grant from PNDOT for the project uh and bid it out. The bids are being rejected so that the scope of the project can be revised and be rebid essentially um to be able to uh accurately or ensure that project is able to meet the funding that we have essentially um from the grant. So that's kind of where the funding is coming from for it and the project needs to be rebid so that we can get quotes that are able to fit with the, the grant that we got essentially. So to that end, I move that Borough Council reject all bids received for the two thousand twenty-five downtown traffic signals equipment upgrade project.
Councillor Stevie makes a motion to reject all bids received for the two thousand twenty-five downtown traffic signals equipment upgrade project. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Shiles. And I'll, I'll just note that it's a green light go grant, um if anybody's curious about what kind of grant that is. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The motion carries.
And finally, I move that Borough Council authorize the borough solicitor to advertise an ordinance amending the code of the borough of Carlisle with respect to chapter two hundred and twelve, solid waste and recyclables to provide for a definition of community activities and third-party collector and delete references to licensed haulers.
Councillor Stevie makes a motion to authorize borough solicitor to advertise an ordinance amending the code of the borough of Carlisle with respect to chapter two twelve, solid waste and recyclables to provide for def- definition of community activities and third-party collector and delete references to licensed haulers. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Shiles. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The motion carries.
And that concludes the Public Works Committee report this evening.
Thank you, councillor Stevie. Sustainable community and economic planning.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, my agenda tonight, uh with two items. Uh, first is that Borough Council may consider sending a letter of support for increased investment in public transit across the Commonwealth, particularly through House Bills one five two three and one five two four uh and companion of memoranda introduced by Senators Lindsey Williams and Nikhil Saval.
Councillor, councillor Shiles makes a motion to, to approve sending a letter of support for increased investment in public transit across the Commonwealth, um particularly through House Bills fifteen twenty-three and fifteen twenty-four and companion memoranda introduced by Senators Lindsey Williams and Nicole Saval. Um, councillor Shiles spoke at this, at some length at the, the end of the workshop last, last week. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by the deputy mayor. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. And the motion carries.
My second item uh on the agenda for tonight is that Borough Council may consider approving a waiver of preliminary plan and limit one parking lot entrance on North Side Lane and approve final plans for Lot Seven Carlisle Auto Industries subject to conditions imposed by staff and the planning commission.
Councillor Shiles makes a motion to approve a waiver of preliminary plans and limit of one parking lot entrance on North Side Lane and approve final plans for Lot Seven Carlisle Auto Industries, subject to conditions imposed by staff and the planning commission. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by the deputy mayor. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The motion carries. Thank you, councillor Shiles. Uh, next, new, new business. This is another opportunity for those uh who would like to address council on any issues of, of borough government. Is there anybody who, who would like to be heard or heard again? And, uh, oh, sorry, James. Yeah, sure, come on up. It's been a, been a rough couple of weeks for the Phils, James.
Yes, yes. Uh, it has. Hopefully they'll come out with a funk after the break. Um, and go birds. I know everybody else was saying still, go birds. Um, James Evans, one five seven B Street. Um, I know there's the talk and the addressing of the environmental issues with using fossil fuels or diesel and gas. Um, I just would like, as you look to move or electrify a fleet and that going forward, um, it's probably a heavy lift, but look at system analysis. And when I say system analysis, you have to look at all the follow-on effects if you fully go that route until we as a nation or as a globe move away from that or Tesla comes out of the shadows and puts the towers where we got free energy. But um, the reason I say that is the, the follow-on effects, I mean, I'm older than maybe I look, but I remember as a kid, the environment when people used to change their oil in the street and dump it down the, this, you know, or antifreeze and then they just threw stuff anywhere. Um, and we, we went through cycles. We went away from recyclable glass bottles and milk jugs and stuff to plastic. So there's a way to get back to it, but I think we need to do it smart. And if we try to electrify things, we also got to understand it's not just getting rid of those vehicles off the street. Where does the lithium and everything else come from? Because while we think that we're saving the environment here, what other environment are we destroying somewhere else where we take those to make that? So there needs to be a balance. I'm not here to say I'm against any of that. It's just we need to look at that big picture when we go forward. And especially if we go and there's more demand for electricity. Um, and now they're talking about putting data centers here in Pennsylvania. What does that strain put onto the grid that affects residents um as, as that grows? So just look at that big picture going forward because we have to do it from a smart perspective and not, hey, let's just get here and then all of a sudden we have fifteen problems. So I just take that into consideration moving forward. Um, and it is seventeen point four percent poverty rate in the borough per the census uh released this year. Um, so it would have a, an effect on, on folks, which you guys rightly adjust and, and you're looking at that tax dollar. So that's all I really wanted to say. Um, just to look at a big picture. I know there's going to be a divide on how people view things, but we can get there, but there needs to be a balance looking at, at both sides. And even if we all feel uncomfortable, well, this doesn't fit mine or doesn't fit mine, you can always find that commonality in the, in the center if you work towards it and, and are just open-minded. So, so I say from a strategic picture. Thank you.
Thanks, James. Anyone else? Go ahead, Eric.
Eric Smith again, one twenty-one Southeast Street. I'll keep it short this time. I appreciate James's comments, but uh since he mentioned data centers, I just want to make folks aware, since I've been beating this drum for a while and realized less other people saw the headline than I did. Um, it was announced maybe six months ago that uh through Mile Island, um over on Susquehanna, the power, nuclear power plant there is being reopened and I was uh, to be honest, a little excited when I saw that since like nuclear has its pros and cons, but energy prices have been skyrocketing, as James mentioned, until I read the article and it said the reopening is being funded exclusively by Microsoft to power their data centers. It's not going to us residents of Pennsylvania and I think that's really concerning, obviously not in the borough. Um, but uh just wanted to get that on the record in case someday there is some company looking to have a data center in Carlisle um for us to consider the damage that uh the companies building these data centers have done and keep, continue doing to us residents. Thanks.
Thank you, Eric. As, as you're coming up, I'll just know, I don't think we have the acreage to, to support a data center. They're, they're looking for a lot more acres than we have, but there is in Cumberland County and so that's, yeah, that can be an issue. Go ahead.
Hello, so I'm a little nervous. I have, I'm still new to this. Uh, my name is Otto Kierman. I live at two oh nine North Hanover Street, currently in the process of buying house in South Pitt. Um, and I just want to kind of bring a topic up that came at a few of the recent meetings that I've been to. Uh, one was about parking and another one was about uh different developments that are being brought in. Um, that I know that the, is it correct to say that the borough has mandatory minimum parking requirements on the books? Uh, so I would like to just have it be stated that those should be removed from uh, from local law as they are not based on sound research. Um, and they are, and they cause a lot of ecological disaster, uh including large oversized parking lots like the Lowe's parking lot, Walmart parking lot, Target parking lot that are mostly not used um and destroy a lot of local environments. So, thank you.
Thank, thank you. You should know, we, you know, we got, got, I'll let the deputy mayor take it because then.
I'm a fan of Otto. He's a great challenge teacher. Man of many traits, uh skills. Um, yeah, this is uh something that we've talked about and it's, it's uh, we have our land use reform subcommittee. Uh, then we, and it's one of the many topics we've talked about. Um, we have done some work on changing, on uh limiting the, the parking, but it's not actually, we still have minimums. So I am an advocate for at least flipping it, saying there's a, take the minimum to the maximum. You know, so like there is no minimum that you have to, but there's also a maximum that you cannot, you know, because I do believe that, you know, if someone needs, they believe that they have the, the need for a parking space, they can have one, you know, or more, but we don't require them. So I have been also on this um. So I have been also on this um, uh, path of, of trying to see how we can look at this. So um, I'm gonna keep on working on it and I'm only here until December, so we'll see what I can do.
We, we won't let up after that. Even if we don't get it done by then, it's uh, it's, it's sorely needed. Go ahead, Council Stevie.
Yeah, um, I just wanted to follow up on that. I, I know you were at the zoning hearing board meeting last week, which I had the opportunity to attend. And at that meeting and, and as, as someone who has been, I've been able to regularly attend them, um, this topic I would say comes up indirectly in a number of cases uh, where the board is, the zoning hearing board that is put in a somewhat awkward position where they're trying to go through the nuance of like whether or not um, a case before them will meet the parking requirements. Uh, and I think that in some ways is testament to uh, this issue and the complexities that it can cause. So I just wanted to highlight that that is something um, that, you know, maybe we aren't always seeing, cuz we're not always at the zoning hearing board meeting, but that, that um, is something they're often dealing with and how they're addressing uh, that implementation in, in practice at least.
Thank, thanks, Council Stevie. And I, I'd say too, I think I probably said this in a meeting before, but there's a lot of common ground on, you know, where we're coming from. Um, and, and also where developers often come from on, on this issue because oftentimes, more often than not, they, they kind of grumble at, at parking minimums. Um, they don't necessarily want them and they, they fight the I T standards. Um, right, yeah, I, you know who wants them? People who, who are nearby. Um, people who live nearby tend, they tend to want parking. Um, it's all, you see it oftentimes in, in housing, um, that, that's, that's near, um, maybe other commercial uses. That's, it's the, it's the, it's the property owners and the folks that live, live nearby who tend to wanna make sure there's parking for, for everybody. Um, and you may, without the maximums that Deputy Mayor talked about, um, you're going to have some, some developers, those big box stores. Um, probably, I mean, you noted, I mean, those, those parking lots are empty like probably three hundred sixty days a year, a year. Um, or clo- close to it. And it's a waste of impervious coverage. It's, it creates heat island. There's a whole bunch of, a bunch of uh, deleterious effects um, from, from that. And then that, we have to deal with um, stormwater runoff from developments that were there decades before we had more modern stormwater regulations and a whole number, number of issues. So it's, it, we take, obviously we take this very seriously, but we, we, we love, you know, that you, you come up and, and just keep, keep us to task on it. So thank you. Um, is there anybody else? Sorry, I went on a bit. Go ahead, Council Bruce.
Um, we're also interested in introducing bike parking to developments. So like, while we're trying to maybe claw back a little bit of those parking spaces, we're also interested in adding some bike specific parking spaces. So just wanted to make sure that that was also of note.
Yeah, good, good point. Um, anyone else? Wanna talk about parking? Yeah, okay, we're good. All right. Um, then we'll, we'll go, go to reports from, from council. So Council Roos, since you, you just spoke, you'd speak again.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Um, I just had one thing to flag uh, in this sort of upcoming period where we're having a lot of different things happening. Uh, June eighteenth, there's going to be a um, event at the Lincoln Cemetery that's being hosted by Hope Station in collaboration with the Cumberland County Historical Society. There's going to be a um, a lighting ceremony happening at the flagpole. So um, come on out at eight thirty and help honor the fifty-one veterans that are buried at the Lincoln Cemetery. Thanks.
Thank you. Council Mel.
Yeah, so I just wanted to say, I mean, um, the mayor alluded to uh, earlier today and when he was doing the proclamation for the birthday of the army, that there's a lot going on this weekend, specifically on Saturday. Um, and I don't wanna steal anyone else's thunder. Saturday is the kickoff of week-long celebrations, both for Juneteenth and for Pride, um, plus the celebrations at AHEC. But on top of that, um, is an annual Carlisle event, the U-Turn Community Yard Sale, um, which is held out at the Carlisle Fairgrounds on the second Saturday of um, every June. Um, and the U-Turn Sale is a really neat example of what we put um, in our strategic plan. It's a wonderful partnership between um, Dickinson College, between the nonprofit community, not just the United Way, which organizes the sale, but a number of other nonprofit um, organizations which benefit um, indirectly from the sale, as well as um, from the uh, business community. Um, the Carlisle Events and Carlisle Fairgrounds um, very graciously host the sale um, every year. Um, and this is the twenty-first, I believe. Um, well, we might have missed one during COVID, so I guess it's the twentieth sale. It was founded in two thousand and five. It was founded by a Dickinson College student um, who was sort of dismayed um, by the trash that was left behind um, at the end of the spring semester as students were moving out of the residence halls. Um, and the fact that most of that trash just went into the landfill. And so there was born and has only grown since two thousand and five this amazing partnership in which Dickinson students um, with a whole team of volunteers will collect um, all of the items um, that students do not um, wanna keep. Um, it's donated to this sale. Um, it's a huge sale. Um, if you've never experienced it, I invite you to come out. Um, and then the proceeds of the sale, the cash proceeds, the sale benefit, the United Way. But um, what's not sold by noon on Saturday is donated to a variety of other nonprofit organizations. Um, one organization in town takes all of the clothing um, to use for their clients. Another um, organization, an animal shelter, takes all of the bedding um, for use in their shelters. Um, we have a couple of organizations that will take the uns, excuse me, the unsold um, housewares and furniture um, for use for clients, particularly those who um, were hit by disaster and need to replace everything in their homes. So it really is an amazing reuse of items and a benefit to, in many cases, some of the least fortunate um, citizens in our area. So I urge you to come out and give, give it a check out because it's really, really cool.
And Council Mel, who, who was that founding student?
Oh, so that student um, was, she was a senior at Dickinson in two thousand and five. Uh, her name is Lindsey Williams. Um, she is now State Senator Lindsey Williams from the thirty-eighth Senatorial District in Allegheny County. And we referenced her um, with regard to the transportation letter that we're sending, did we not?
We did. That's the, that's part of the reason I asked. It's just coincidentally, yeah. Um, Council Stevie. Um, I, you know, we do, so much going on, um, June, June's a great month to be in the borough of Carlisle. Um, not only Saturday, but uh, by the time we, we come back together, Summer Fair will be kicked off uh, starting June, June twenty-seventh. So um, and that's, I should, I should know, it's, it's how many years? They usually put it on their pamphlet, but I don't, I don't see it. Yeah, it's, yeah, it's more than fifty years, I know. But a long time. I, long before I was, I lived here and probably, I think I was born the same year it started. It's something around that. So um, De- does Deputy Mayor have anything?
I just wanted to say that uh, I really appreciate everyone that comes up and speaks and everyone up here that brings thoughtful guidance and questions. So uh, please keep doing it and I appreciate that we have such a respectful um, understanding of we can have differing opinions, but we can also uh, the, the whole goal is for us to do better and just continually do better and think different, think differently and expand our um, our viewpoints. And uh, and I, I just, I, I really do appreciate every single time someone comes up and helps us have a broader conversation. Um, and I do love the U-Turn Yard Sale. I'll be there, so.
Council Perry.
Um, so yeah, actually I was having a conversation yesterday with someone and they asked me the question about um, um, how we deal with uh, with, with issues with, with the borough. And I say, um, I am like you, I, and I've said this to you all before, that I appreciate um, the relationship that we have with each other. And, you know, we also appreciate when people come and they get up to the mic. There's no, um, we might disagree on things, but we don't leave here with this serious argument or anything like that. You know, once a vote is been voted on, that's it, we're good. Um, um, understanding that we just have a difference of opinion. So I have to agree with you on that. Um, but I will also say there are a lot of things that are going on in the borough um, Saturday. So I hope that everybody gets out and is able to enjoy all of the things. I know that the weather is looking a little iffy, but I hope you're able to get out and enjoy. And um, and I ask that everybody, please stay safe. We know that when there are lots of things going on, there's lots of traffic that things happen. So I hope that everyone is safe and enjoys the weekend. And that's it.
Thank you, Council Shiles.
I feel like I'm already like, looking at my schedule for Saturday. I'm a little tired already, but uh, uh, it's exciting, everything that's going on. Um, I uh, it sounds like uh, June twenty-seventh is also gonna be a busy uh, busy uh, weekend. Uh, there's the um, uh, Cement Mixer. It's a fundraiser for the Carlisle Tool Library. Um, just sort of thought I'd put that out there. It's at the Ribbon Mill. Um, you can go on their website for more information. Um, and I'm looking forward to Juneteenth and Pride as well. Um, if anybody wants to come to the uh, Big Gay Walk, we'll be having the Big Gay Bike Ride. Um, and uh, we'll, we'll have the drum bike there. So uh, I haven't checked with my drummer yet, but I'm pretty sure he's, he's ready to be there, so.
Yeah, I should mention too, the Pride, Pride and Juneteenth kickoff right, right about the same time. So, but they're, but they're long enough that they, yeah. I have to be here for the Pride Proclamation eleven. I have to run the Hope Station by eleven thirty um, to, to speak at their, their kickoff. But um, but it goes long enough. And then um, and then B and L has their, your, has their, has their Caribbean uh, festival on Palmford Street. So you can kind of take a route through the borough and hit just about every, everything on, on Saturday. Fingers crossed the weather, weather stays um, or starts to look a little bit better than.
I'll be there rain or shine.
Um, is Borough Manager have anything for us?
Just quickly, I'd just like to thank you, Mayor, for recognizing the Army's uh, birthed them uh, as a proud daughter of an Army veteran and a proud, very proud mother of um, her only child, her daughter, that served proudly in the United States Army. Uh, thank you. Thank you for recognizing uh, the, you know, the importance of not only the Army, but um, every one of our branches that served proudly. And um, it's because of them uh, that we have the freedoms that we do today. So, sorry, Chief, that it was the Army today, but we'll eventually get to your branch.
Yeah, Chief, sorry. I, I did, I, I do have a cousin who's a Marine too, just to cover, cover our bases. I don't have anybody in the Coast Guard or the Merchant Marines, but. Um, so Solicitor Brenneman, do you have anything for us? Okay, thank you. Then we are adjourned. Thank you all.